June 23rd, meeting the Christiansburg Town Council for order. We will observe a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. So we would take a moment of time now for the pledge. Thank you to your right for the pledge of allegiance and arrangements. Hicks, she would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God in the United States of America, and to the people who are with us today, one nation under God, indivisible, with all its justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. We move into the public hearings. We have a public hearing in Resonance question right now. We point the Pagnoni Point Community LLC, advocate for property owned by International Church of the Voice for Gospel, the California Corporation located northeast of the intersection of Peppers Ferry Road and New Village Drive Northwest, tax map number 434-A-8-A-8A. And a request, the request to rezrown property from 9.14 acre property from A Agriculture to R3 multifamily residential property. Property is designated as residential in the future land use map 2013 County Christiansburg. Is there anyone here to address this map?
He's here.
Okay. Well, let's get him in.
Mr. Mayor, I will point out you have a revised proffer statement at your seats.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Brian McHale. I'm from, my address is 2524 Whitecliff Avenue, Roanoke, Virginia, 24014. We're going to be very brief. Before I start though, I did want to briefly introduce a member of our staff, Catherine Mahoney, who just has a few quick words to say.
Hello. My name is Catherine Mahoney. I am originally from Darlington, South Carolina, but I have lived in Roanoke for the past couple of years. Forgot to say my address. It is 8 North Jefferson Street, apartment 411, Roanoke, Virginia, 24016. I am also the operations manager for R. Freyland Homes. I was hired to help manage the operations department, but also to help with our warranty division. We've recently implemented a new policy that requires all customers to receive a response within 24 hours. We're constantly trying to improve ourselves, and we see that there is some need for improvement there, so they have hired me to help do so. So we are constantly growing and changing, and it's a great thing. Overall, I think that R. Freyland Homes is family oriented, and we strive to be trustworthy and loyal to not only our customers, but our employees. And I am thankful to have a job there. So, thank you all, and good evening.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
You are going to be there at the apartment complex on a full-time basis?
Oh, no, sir. My, my address that I gave is my apartment complex.
Yes, but I mean during the working day, you'll be, be there?
No, sir, but our warranty department is always reachable via email.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Will there be anybody there full-time?
Thank you for that, Catherine.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I defer.
Okay.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Look at her. Yes, so Steve, to your question, so Catherine works in our home division, but for this project that we're about to talk about, once it's built to a reasonable scale, we will be having onsite staff both for leasing and for maintenance support. So that, that's part of the plan.
Nine to five, whatever type of thing?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this, this project allows us to get a critical mass in this area to, to, you know, support staffing like that. So, yeah, thanks for the question.
You currently have some rental problems, correct?
I'm sorry?
You currently have some rental problems.
We do.
So where is the office that you run those out of? Is it in Roanoke or here in Christiansburg?
It's in Roanoke. And so we send staff to the area, whether it's for showings or to handle maintenance orders. Yeah, thanks for the question. So we never want to take any more time than we're due, so we'll be very brief. All of you, including Mrs. Hicks, who was here as a citizen at the time, saw the full presentation, so we're just going to highlight the changes since we were last here and some, you know, key attributes. So, you know, the, the key part of this, in our view, is that this answers an unmet need in Christiansburg for upscale housing at an affordable price. And we've bolded and underscored affordable for a reason. So our, our target, future Christiansburg resident, is going to have annual household income of 29,000 and above. So we're able with these price points to hit a big part of the Christiansburg future population. We also understand from studies we've heard about and seen that the town's commission that we're anticipating population growth of 5,000 new residents through 2030, and we'd like to be part of solving that, that unmet need. As we've talked about before, we believe this project is complementary and compatible with the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Provides excellent support to current and local businesses and significant source of new tax revenue for the town, no matter how you define that, whether it's property tax, water fees, meals tax, retail tax, all those sorts of things. So I want to go, the, the big change we have here is our new proffer statement. This is proffer number five. And I'll, I'll read it word for word here. So housing units shall be limited to no more than 72 units until which time the property owner secures the land for, issues a bond for, and constructs a public road connecting Bozeman Trail to Walters Drive. So basically, that is, that is limiting this project to its full capacity until which time we put that road in, and we are committed to doing such.
Now, let me, let me ask you something. Will you give me? You are going to wait until the 72 apartments are through before you put the, then Walter's Drive on? How's that going to work?
Not necessarily. It's just going to take some time to engineer it, put all the parcels of land together to, to make it actually work. And so we need, we need the time, you know, in order for the project to be feasible, start building it, and then parallel, get this, this connection completed. So we're not going to wait till the 72, 72nd unit, but we can't build anything beyond that until which time this is done.
Sometimes that worries me, you know? They say, well, we'll do it when we're finished, and, and, you know, then we'll do it, and then something comes up, and, I mean, is there a way that we could even put in that after you've done 30, 30 apartments or something like that, then that will go in? Could we make that part of the proffer?
Mr. Huffer, if I had to do my, I'm R. Freyland, I think, about 19:00 o'clock ago, probably. To answer your question, what we tried to do is find a reasonable compromise. We have 146 units proposed, which there's a demand for that here with future housing, and understandably, the town would like a connection to Walters Drive. And as a compromise, we reduced it over half and said, we will not build that 73rd unit or anything after that until which time that road is actually installed. And we also did traffic studies, which he's getting ready to talk about, that noted that although the, the traffic patterns can handle what was proposed, we're being extra cautious here, and I have to say in good faith, although it's going to be a little bit expensive, a connection to Walters Drive obviously makes welfare, safety, all that stuff better. So that, I hope that answered your questions, and if not, I don't have to address anything else.
One, one more thought. Is this going to be in writing, Mr. Winfield, or is this going to be?
It's a proffer.
In the proffer, you're part of the proffer?
Statements in front of you.
Okay.
Yeah, we turned in the notarized proffer statement this evening.
To that point, Mr. Huffer, this, this particular proffer, this was, this was a, speaking for one council person, that was a major holdup for me with the original proposal.
I remember that.
Because we, I think it's in the town's best interest in the long run to limit the number of new full access intersections along 114 to keep the throughput on 114 there with this, with the new connection here, as they're proposing to be done just before halfway, before ultimate, halfway through ultimate development. The traffic, or the people, the folks that live in New River Village and the folks that live in the new development, especially the New River Village have been at, that was, been on the books for years is to have a secondary access point to get out, but they will, if, if this goes through, then the beneficiaries of that will also be the current residents of New River Village, because you can actually go all the way to this traffic signal at Villas at Peppers Ferry and never even get on that 114. But I just wonder, that was a major sticking point for me to last go around, because I personally didn't want to see another full access intersection on 114 if we didn't have to. And coming over to Walters suits that, fits that bill.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying there. I just wanted to make sure that the thing was going to happen, you know?
It will happen.
Sometimes things happen in there, you know?
Right.
But thank you.
Yep. Good. So obviously, as we just talked about, this is a good opportunity, this project, to connect Walters Drive with New River Village. We did new traffic study calculations since our last hearing after school was in session at peak times, and those calculations show that the intersections proposed here are fully capable of meeting the demand that's going to be put on them, along with, you know, both the existing community and this future community. And then lastly, you know, the sidewalks that we're going to be putting, putting in place on Bozeman Trail and New Village are going to provide further connectivity to the Greenway system that I know the town's invested a considerable amount in.
So, one second, I'm sorry. So you're talking about that there is, you were considering about having sidewalks along the New Village Trail, and then there was a request that we had made, and see if there was a way that you could comply with that request?
Yes.
And then you came back, and there was something due to the alignment issues and things like that. Do you guys, were you guys able to work through all those details so we can have?
Yeah, let me, I'd like to ask Steve Semenus just to address that briefly, but.
Good evening. Steve Semenus.
Pauls or Associates. So yes, Ms. Hicks, we did, we did propose to install sidewalks down New Village Drive, so we have that going to a certain point. It's not going to go all the way around New Village and wrap in front of the existing housing down there, but we are going to get it on the section road that would be adjacent to this property.
Are you going to connect it to the trail as well?
The trail, which, the, there's a trail across the street.
Yeah, the one that goes by Bozeman Trail or whatever that, the name, isn't it?
Bozeman Trail's the name of the road.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's the name of the main road that goes down, and that, that would have sidewalks per town code as well.
So the trail that is going to connect your apartments to the other current trail that is on the other side of New Village, they will be able to connect?
We'll have to work with engineering staff as far as if we can put a crosswalk or some sort of delineator across New Village Drive right there, but there will be sidewalk on our side of the road, and then the trail will be on the other side. But there is one connection point there. We'll just have to work with engineering staff during site plan to see how they want us to.
You've been on the plans for tonight, is that an NCA?
It should be. There's not a marker shown as far as where a crosswalk would be. If you look at. First, the front here, if that's okay. You can see that, that kind of hatched line right there, those are the sidewalk connections through the property. So that's the section right there we're talking about. So here's Bozeman Trail, that's the road, 50-foot right of way. So we have sidewalk all the way down Bozeman Trail, and we're picking up, there's already sidewalk along the front of Peppers Ferry, we would pick it up right here and take it all the way down across the connection over to the, to the existing trail system I can't see on this area. But again, there's a, there's an access point here, so when this property ever develops in the future, it could be a possible crosswalk there at that, that location as well.
Who is going to be in charge of the maintenance of the trail and sidewalks?
The sidewalks, if it's, and I would ask if the, if the town had any other thoughts, if it's, if it's on the private side of the road, if it's on our property, it would be the developer's responsibility to maintain those sidewalks. If it's in public right of way, it's typically a town, town maintenance if it's in the public right of way, I believe.
The law of the movie, build the town, standard specifications.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, and if we could just pause on this one slide here, I wanted to point out the two road improvements that we've added in the project over, you know, based on all the feedback we've gotten from council and the town. So we've added a dedicated right turn lane on New Village Drive, which is in the lower left-hand corner of that graphic, just to, you know, more safely direct the flow out of that community. And then, I think most importantly, on the new road, Bozeman Trail, we've made that a right in only and a right out only. There was concern voiced by several folks about left-hand turns on a Peppers Ferry, so this prevents that from being an issue. And that's really all we had to present tonight. Welcome, any questions you may have?
Do you have a playground in there in place that you're planning to build?
I don't think so, but.
We are open to that, yeah, we. You can hear me now, sorry. Let's see, we have a clubhouse and a pool proposed and walking trails. We're not against the playground. We certainly want to provide any amenities that the market wants and the community wants, but we frankly haven't thought of it.
Well, because I know the last time you guys came to council, you brought some of your tenants from some of your commercial tenants, and I know that one of their things was that they wanted to, that they came to that place to rent from you guys because of the tremendous property. And that's not, we don't have all the money to build a park, and so as far as you guys providing a park, it will be, it will sit better for me, because this is a very big amount of properties that you're going to be building, and it would just accommodate and help with the green space in the town. Does this qualify with a 20% green space? Is this a requirement for this or not?
Well, how can you know if it's a requirement?
What's the square footage of the green space for this facility? Can anybody comment?
That is. We're required to provide 58,000 square feet, Miss Hicks, and we're providing on this plan 61,000. So a couple thousand square feet.
And all these, they're all going to be rentals, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have not fully decided, oh, apartments that we're discussing, we haven't fully decided about the towns. We, we might sell those. We, we just don't know for sure now. I hope that's not a bother, but we just don't know particularly in this environment what the market's saying. We're happy to sell, but, you know, just housings are kind of a fickle, fickle thing.
We're taking the sponsorships for the next part.
Until we know it.
I have a question. You mentioned the threshold for income was 29,000.
Right.
What does that equate to as far as a rental price?
Yeah, so we're 750 to 800 on up to, you know, a really nice two-bedroom, maybe up to 1,100, which if you compare around the market, that's very affordable comparatively for a brand-new housing community like this, new apartment homes. It's really, I don't think is that price point's really provided here, and I do think it's commensurate with your housing study.
Right. Thank you.
Robert Wood. This project sort of looks like, you have, do you have a similar project in Roanoke on Peters Creek Road?
Yes, sir. It's called North Point.
Okay.
Yeah. It's really similar, actually.
Yeah, it almost mimics it. I mean, aesthetic, aesthetic flaws, but.
Right. It's pretty exciting, you know?
Yeah. I actually made a trip down there and took a look at it one Saturday morning, and I want to commend you. I mean, it was very clean, it was kept up, and I'm mentioning that because what was mentioned at the planning commission last night regarding Montgomery County Schools, anybody saw that, about non-upkeep in, in certain, certain facilities, but I do want to commend you and your staff on that. It looked nice.
Thank you. I really appreciate you going down there and looking at it.
Do you have any stormwater plans for this as far as?
Right.
Stormwater management, the majority of the city's, we handle just off to the left of this one building right here, in this larger area right there. We have done full engineering plans on that. Ma'am?
Are you going to have a stormwater pond?
We would have some sort of stormwater facility, yes, ma'am.
And the, and the pool of the clubhouse that you just showed us, those are done deals, right? That's definitely going to come?
Yes, they're, they're going in.
For sure. Okay.
Will those be done before you finish the 72 units?
Yes. We, we find it, you all are busy tonight, I find it unwise to offer such an amenity and not build it when you're leasing up, because that attracts the market, plus that's what people are paying for.
Goes back to the park?
I'm sorry?
The park, the tremendous property. I'm messing with you.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have got one. Steve, you probably best answer this, and same with staff, since they did do the traffic analysis. My biggest, biggest concern with this development, and I understand that the counts, that they're under what's required, and, and I do appreciate that additional right turn access in there. My biggest concern would be going left out of New River Village Road, because inevitably not, I can't imagine not very many residents in the New River Village or this, this project would be going right, going out towards the arsenal. Everybody seems to be going left, and I do have a concern there. And of course, traffic calming measures, the one thing we've seen out of, at least one other project on this road was at least a light was put in to assist that. And when I look at 114, even though I think it's, it's very maneuverable right now, I do see that adding these apartments, there's some skepticism with the report, even though I know it's accurate and it's up to code and things like that meets the DOD parameters. It's the going left over two lanes, which I would say over 90% of all residents in that community won't be going. Can you address that for me?
So I was, Paul, it took us a little bit of time after our first meeting here before council to go back and do the counts. We did spend, we worked with Mr. Nelson and his engineering department to find out the exact parameters they wanted us, wanted us to study. If you remember that first public hearing, we were giving you our observations on it, the old studies, and Mr. Sykes, to his credit from his traffic background, wanted a little bit more. So when we went back and worked with council or worked with staff, we had the parameters they wanted us to use, the counts they wanted us to take, the times they wanted us to take them, the locations they wanted us to take them, which warrants we were to look at. When we sent our first report in to Mr. Nelson's office, we had a 75%, 25% split, so 25% of the people going, going towards Radford, 75% coming towards the mall. We submitted that, and during some comments back and forth, they asked us to kick that up to an 85-15. So that's the ratios we used per town, per engineering recommendations to use 85% of the people are either coming from town, coming from the mall or going towards the mall. The other 15% were going to and from the Radford area. And those, those are the numbers and ratios we used on our signal warrant analysis, and those three warrants that we were asked to show did not meet with those requirements. So I know that the feeling or the concern and maybe the skepticism, but to the point we're at right now, going through the full study and submitting it to the town, that's about the best we can, the best we can provide to council at this time.
How come you guys came up with the Tuesday day to do the traffic study?
Typically, in, in, in this area here, well, in, in general traffic study guidelines, you want to use a Tuesday, Wednesday, or a Thursday. You know, Mondays are different. People are going back to work, some people are taking a long weekend, same thing for Fridays. So we never do counts on a Monday or a Friday. We try not to do counts if there's bad weather, we try not to do counts if, if public schools aren't in session, or Virginia Tech and Radford are in session. So we have a very short window of time after we had our council meeting to get those counts done. So we reached out to the folks that we use, and Tuesday was the first, the earliest day we could get it done. So that, that's the reason.
Now, that right turn, my, I mean, that is going to be installed off of Peppers Ferry. Who's going to pay for that?
That would be the developer. That would be part of this project. That would not be a town's budget. Yeah, all the improvements shown on the project would be more by the developer.
Another question I have is the overuse of the public utilities that includes the water system. Do you have any plans as far as, and I guess Randy, can you tell me a little bit, because we do know that we have some old water lines on that side of town?
We do have a, a water line main there on Peppers Ferry Road, so as far as volume and water pressure, I don't think they should have any, any issues. And of course, they'd have to pay to extend the lines into, the service lines into the property, and they'd have to pay connection fees for the meters.
And with our applications, we always provide estimated water sewage usage, so staff can check that against any of the models they have in-house to see if there's, you know, if the pump station has limited capacity, or as Randy said, the water lines don't have the right pressure and the right flows. But we've, we've not heard any, any indication from town engineering staff there being issues.
Thank you. Conditional use from your request contingent on the preceding item by Magnolia Point Community property owned by International Church, we would like a conditional use permit for this properties that we have just discussed in terms of the housing on it. Anyone to address this matter? I will say that these, hearing none, I will close this, that portion of the public hearing. I will say that planning commission voted in, I believe, November?
No, it was September or November.
September, November to, they voted 6-0, and there were four people absent on both requests, so it passed unanimously from the members of the commission that were there. Street vacation request by Gaye and Neal Incorporated for an ordinance to vacate an approximately 0.012 acre portion of right of way along the east side of North Franklin Street located adjacent to the intersection of North Franklin Street and Acres Farm Road Northeast. The portion of the right of way that joins 100 Acres Farm Road, tax map number 46622-1. Any comments? Hearing none. Town of Christiansburg, community development, substantial agreement to the 2019 Annual Action Plan in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Winfield, is that yours?
It is.
Answering whom that was, guy?
Basically, this is Community Development Lot Grant Amendment, basically received $60,000, $63,000 from Community Development Lot Grant for COVID response.
And I think you have the percentage of it is 40%. Is that what we're looking at? 40% for, Randy, you can play.
So, Randy, with this, just real quickly, it's a substantial amendment, having to answer any questions afterwards, but it's a substantial amendment of an annual action plan that was approved by council last fall. And basically, what it allows the town to do is to accept the $62,234 from HUD and to use that towards, in this case, they have eliminated any ceiling on the amount of money you can spend towards public services, where in a typical CDBG year, it would be limited to 15%. We always focus our money on infrastructure, so we never have that issue. But in this, this year, for, for this allocation, there is no limit. So what's proposed is a substantial amendment for relief that, that we've heard for, for homeless prevention, as well as, as well as food security issues, and, and as well as economic development and, and healthcare concerns. And so I would like to focus the dollars on that, and then 40%, looking at 40% of expenditures on, on homelessness prevention, meaning mortgage and rent relief as far as utility relief as well. Working with a local nonprofit, a proposal that has been put into us is through the New River Community Action to, to provide for housing counseling, plus, plus the dollars relief to work with a certain amount of families over a certain amount of time to ensure that they would be able, they would be able to stay in their home. Then food security issues, we would look to work with McKee and Salvation Army. We are also looking at a couple other food banks in town that have shown some interest as well. And, and so we would, we would be looking to do 40% for food security issues, and then so there's 40% homeless prevention, 40% food security issues, and the remaining 20% would be economic development and, and healthcare. And, and we don't really have a provider for economic development. And we don't really have a provider for economic development. If we were going to do that, we would probably need a second funding source really to make it more impactful for more businesses. But that is, that is definitely a consideration. And for healthcare, we could look to work with the New River Community Healthcare Center, or another nonprofit, to provide some additional healthcare services. The next step, if this is approved, would be to submit it to HUD, see if they have any feedback of us, and then we would need to approach the nonprofits that we've already made initial connections with, but then we would have to enter into formal agreements with them for, to allocate the dollars to them. It is a new, it is a new role for us at the town, to work with human services groups. But HUD is trying to make it as, as easy as they can for us to get the dollars out as quickly as we can. That's why it is on your agenda tonight to take action, so that we can, if you're in a position to take action, so that we can get the amendment back to HUD, so that they can look to make a final decision on it, and we can hopefully receive the dollars to get them out to the community as quickly as possible.
I'm kind of about this. Regardless of America, we're getting our money for these organizations, because the reality is, they were in need months ago, they're in need today, and I would really like to put this in motion to vote on it tonight, so thank you for bringing it out.
It is on the agenda, but on tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it would be great, you know.
Any other questions?
So this is, so these uses you've described for this money, is this, these are approved uses then? They're fantastic, because in the past, we've used, this is, is this different from the money that we did in community development with sidewalks and so forth?
Correct, yeah.
Well, it's great that the money can be used this way, that's, that's, so that's, is that a recent change to that?
It is relief through the CARES Act only for this CDBG allocation.
Okay, gotcha.
So, once we get our normal allocation again in 2020, we would still have that 15% cap on human services.
I think that's fantastic, thanks.
Sure.
What's the anticipated date interval of receiving the funds and disbursement advice?
So, I'm hoping the mid to late August.
Okay. And would, would it be a problem for us to find out how those funds are dispersed, or who to?
No, absolutely, we could, once we, well, once we enter into agreements, I could provide updates to Randy, and he could get that out to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Why don't you say until August for the money to be disposed?
I'm hoping that it's sooner, I really am, but what, it just, for the wheels, you know, once we get it to HUD, and then they get the approval to us, and then once we get the agreement signed, and then set up in our system in order to get the money out, it could be that timeframe, we'll try as quick as we can.
Actually, got an idea.
Thank you. I will close the public hearings, we go over the consent agenda. Before we go into that, I think I saw a request from Mr. Freyland and his group to consider this, their request tonight, and their actions by council and mayor.
If you wanted full council vote on it, or you could wait, I think we were expecting an absence at the next council meeting, he had suggested either maybe voting tonight, or waiting until the second July meeting, if you want a full council vote. But that's, that's up to council's discretion, though.
I would have no problem with tonight.
I'd rather wait.
Me as well.
Okay, very good. Very, very good. Under the consent agenda, we had the approval of minutes in June 9, 2020. Authorization for renewal of landfill professional services contract with SCS engineers in the amount of $120,000. Award a contract to Mendon Pipeline Inc. in the amount of $517,115 for construction of the Silver Lake Interceptor Phase One project, and a resolution recognizing Al Bowman, who serves Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority and Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Executive Airport.
I so move to approve A through D on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to make a question about the letter A. Under the approval of the minutes, there was some of the words that I had said during that agenda were not in the agenda. I think including questions that I had about the ethical behavior, and questions about Jennifer Martin personally.
Okay. Do you have those recordings, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
That you could?
Yeah, I can hold this up.
Now, for the discussion, Madam Clerk, would you, oh, sorry.
I have one. So I'll amend my, Marissa, will you amend your?
Yes, I'll amend.
To include the corrections in the minutes?
Correct, so I so move to accept A through D with the addition of Ms. Hicks's request for the consent agenda.
I'll second. And I just have a question, real quick question, I should have asked you this earlier, Randy, but for the landfill professional services, is that for which, that for the one out?
Yes, yes, it is.
And how's that, how's that paid for, is that through our enterprise funds for solid waste?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Introductions and presentations, we have an update on business technology assessment. Craig Hatmaker, who is our IT director, and Val, are you in on this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, come on, do it.
We're going to double team you tonight. We'll switch up some roles and do some different things. So back in February, we presented to you at the, there we go, at the retreat, where we were with the technology assessment, and what all was going on with that. So, why new software, why do we need to do something different? I thought we'd just kind of recap where we've been, what we've done, what we've done so far, how we got there, why we got here, and then where we are at the moment, and what we need to move forward. So we'll try not to take too much time, and just get you up to date. So first of all, we engaged the services of Barry Dunn to help us to design an RFP, and evaluate the assessments that came in, and make sure that we were going at this in the right way, to get the right questions asked and answered in evaluating the software. We were looking for financial management software that would also directly interface with all the departments to make transactions easier to do, and to limit the amount of constant interaction. So why do we need it? Well, for two years in a row, we've had sightings from our auditors about our property tax billing, meals and lodging tax software, and some of the issues that we have with it. It's overly cumbersome, it's subject to crashes, it has limited reporting ability, and it's not interfaced to our general ledger, which means it's kind of over here, and then we have to constantly make entries back and forth to balance them out. Our general ledger software is also not fully integrated. We don't have applications that will work with Public Works, with engineering, with building inspections, to help make their job easier with respect to permits, and so on and so forth. So, one of the best examples of this is Public Works needs a way to communicate with the guys out in the field that are doing service orders, connecting water, disconnecting water, installing new sites, taking care of street problems, whatever the case may be. And they do that with an application called Hyperweb, but it doesn't talk to Great Plains. So, in Great Plains, in order to properly bill our customers, we have to do the service orders in Great Plains. Then we have to turn around and do them again in Hyperweb, so that it gets out to the guys in the field. So, as adept as we have been in being flexible, and trying to find ways to work around the systems that we have, and we've done a lot to do that, it's very time consuming and very inefficient. So that was, the tax software kind of drove this in the beginning. The more we looked at it, the more we said, you know what, we really need to do better. And our biggest thing was to be able to create a 24-hour town hall. Hindsight's 2020, had we had this software before we went into the pandemic, we would be getting through all of these processes a lot easier than we are now. But this probably will not be the first or the last experience that we have where we may have to rely heavily on software. So we'd like to get that moving forward. In order to do this, we appointed, it was a five-person team, basically, and then they had contacts within their departments that we reached out to. So initially, we sat down and answered, and it wasn't just the group of five, it was everybody in any department that would have some involvement with any aspect of a new software application. So there was probably somewhere between 40 and 50 people that were actively involved in filling out over 3,000 questions about what it was we wanted this software to be able to do. We then looked at what those pain points were, we also diagrammed a lot of our really complex processes, and of course, what came out of it was in part what we already knew, was the tax billing software, occupational licensing, the fact that our systems are not true fund accounting system, and that it didn't have integration. So those were sort of the key things that we wanted to solve with the new software. So, we took those needs assessments, combined them all, and that's how we came up with the backbone of the RFP. So it kind of went out and said, here's all the functionality that we want, these are the things that are critical to us, what of these needs can you fill? So that created RFP, we got five responses to the RFP. Some of the key differentiators amongst the governmental type software is that it has to be municipality specific, it has to have tight integration with community development type things and financials, and provide for customer self-service in the 24-hour town hall. So this is a list of who's out there in this segment. Only about four in that list are full ERP systems, which means they're all fully integratable, they cover all of the functional areas that we were looking at. So it just kind of gives you an idea, it's a fairly small market, only four of these are full ERP systems. These are the functional areas that we looked at, and we picked two vendors that could meet all of the, these areas, and respond to our questions, and could meet all of those needs. And then we took those two vendors, and each bought two and a half days to come in to present the functionality of their software. And again, we used a fairly large group, it was between 40 and 50 participants that came in and assessed and reviewed the functionality of various areas of interest that they all had. And everybody answered an assessment process for the vendor, who had, I liked this vendor's better, I rated them a five, this one I rated a three, or whatever, so there was a lot of evaluations. And then Barry Dunn pulled those together, and so we now have our, so we now have our preferred vendor, which is the most advanced technologically on the spectrum, and had the highest ratings from all the participants. So we're at the point of getting ready to do contract negotiations, which is in part why we're before you tonight, is to get your nod to go ahead and move forward. And we did a number of financial impacts on what the cost was for each of these vendors, and this is where we're going to do a switch. Craig has done some fabulous modeling with his superior Excel skills that he's going to run through with you to kind of give you an idea of how that looks, and how we're assessing the contract, and how we would look at those contract negotiations. That?
So here's a nice eye chart for you guys. Basically, what we did, we looked at what the 10-year impact was for, if we, when we buy the software, we're able to negotiate it to a price that we can afford, and then we're going to have offsets. These are things that we are no longer going to pay for. We're no longer going to pay for Great Plains software, or Hyperweb, or any of these other softwares we're currently using that are going to be replaced by a preferred provider. And what that does is after we get over the initial hump, the initial cost, we have a little chart down there at the bottom where you see some red numbers, those are actually good numbers. They're red, but they're good. What they're saying is that in the fourth year, we're spending less money with the preferred solution than we are with our combined software now. So we'll have a budget savings in year four and on. So where are we getting these hard dollar savings from? On the bottom right, you see all of the logos of the software that we will be replacing. That software goes away, and it gives you an idea of how much different pieces of software we have that are not integrated to each other, they don't speak to each other. To make them speak to each other, it costs a lot of money. But by getting a single solution provider, we can eliminate that cost, and we can have the savings. Then there's some soft dollar savings, some efficiencies that we're going to get. One of them we'll talk about is, as you may be aware, that the federal government is currently considering electronic records mandate. That will eventually trickle down to us. What that means is that we will have to have, get rid of all those paper records, and have them stored electronically. Those paper records occupy a lot of file cabinets, you're well aware of all the file cabinets in the room next door. If you go downstairs, you see file cabinets, if you go into Valerie's office, you see file cabinets. Those file cabinets take up space that could be occupied by people. Those file cabinets cost us money, and if this, if we ever have a fire, those records are reduced to ash. And I can't recover from ash, but I can recover from electronic records for more backup. Another good feature of it is, as Valerie touched on, is the software that we're looking at will provide a customer-facing or resident-facing software that will enable them to conduct business with the town from the comfort of their own home on their, on their schedule. So we won't have the situation we have today where people are having a hard time getting into the town, or we used to have, just a few days ago, where people could not get into the town to conduct business. So, this is the, this is, that's the soft dollar benefits, they actually do create dollar benefits, but they're not directly related to the software, so we call them soft dollar. Any questions? Oh, okay, so now we are talking, here's, one of the things that we want to do next is figure out how we can afford this software, and where we can negotiate most effectively. One of the gray, the big gray slice of that pie is the bottom item maintenance. So most people think that if you spent, if you save money on the initial software, because they're, because they're already providing us some discounts for the initial license. But the software license is that first item, that small black section of the pie. If we negotiate that down, we're only negotiating a small section of the pie. Where we have a chance to negotiate, to get better savings, is through negotiating maintenance. So this diagram tells us where we need to concentrate our efforts. The two efforts are negotiate maintenance down, and to reduce the cost of implementation. And we hope to be able to do that through having people work remotely. Instead of coming here to work on the software, we want them to work remotely, and we can avoid all this travel cost. And that can make a big difference.
So, next step is to have approval from the council to move forward with contract negotiations. Once we have a contract that we believe is workable, we'll prevent that, present that to council for final approval, and then we'll move forward with developing an implementation strategy. We think that it will take approximately two years. All of us are anxious, everybody wants it done tomorrow. Unfortunately, it's a time-consuming and laborious task, and it will probably take two to two and a half years to implement all pieces of the software. So the sooner we start, the sooner we get done. The biggest pusher on this is we're going to implement the tax piece of it first, and we would, we need to start that by this September, in order to have it in place by next September, a year from now. Hopefully, we'll get some other things done in that same period of time, but that's our primary push right now, is to get that stuff. And we'll work on reducing implementation time, and getting done as quick as we can. Thank you.
And the company that you're thinking about working with?
And the company that you're thinking about working with, they have a track record that's good?
Yes, they do.
And they've been around for a little while, too. It's all I've ever heard you guys talk about is great planes, great planes. And now you're going, you're taking a dramatic shift here, and you have good confidence that these people are, can stand by their work?
I have a question for you. So to do the contract negotiations, is this going to cost us any money?
Yeah, the software is budgeted, and this year's about to start to move forward.
I know, but if you are going to get approval from us to get, working on trying to get prices in quotes, there shouldn't be a charge in there, right? Just you guys?
Oh, no. There's no cost for the negotiations. It's just the cost comes once we agree with the contract and move forward.
And now are we, is our IT department going to be able to handle the IT work required to install and develop all of this?
Yes.
Work to be done?
So I guess you're looking for a nod for us to proceed? So nod.
Do we need to take action on it?
I will make a motion that we move forward with approving this if we have the rest of your eyes.
Second that. If we can, if it's supposed to take action now, mayor?
Take action on it now?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
My one question is for you.
Yes.
Are we, are we with the new projectors and everything else that we're supposed to be getting? Is that still in the works?
The projectors should be in next week, according to Jody Lively. He's a little hookups, he owns Hookups Plus. And he is committed to having them in next week, starting Monday, and hopefully finishing Tuesday before this calendar, fiscal calendar ends. Cameras will come later. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Great. Well, thank you very much. Next, we open up our citizens' comments section. If you're going to address council, you need to give us your name, your home address, and you're limited to three minutes. Who do you want to like to address council?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me come tonight. My name is Matthew Hicks. I live at 607 and a half South Franklin Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. That is my lovely wife there. I'm just a concerned citizen and husband tonight, just over the overall perception that I've gathered since living here in 1996. And now obviously, I'm in fact learning more of what's behind the scenes. My biggest concern is what happened to all the savings or surplus during the baldering of years that he had during his time. It seemed like he had a pretty good setup for infrastructure and budgeting. And my understanding, ran a pretty tight budget and had fixed limit on spending and took care of the infrastructure first. From what I gathered here recently, it appears that the taxpayers are never technically put first in the town's agendas. There's a lot of closed-door meetings, and that's kind of specifically to keep them out, which I know you guys are kind of adjusting. There's also the big concern about the 114 main water line that's been in planning for over 10 years for replacement. Haven't yet heard of any proposed plans of, how have we been planning for the past 10 years to pay for those things? I know that we do want to get another part, but we're also looking at a large debt to afford that. I would hope that the water line or infrastructure would come first before we go into a major debt undertaking there. Just a comment, personal matter as a husband. My wife Johanna Hicks is very honest and fair. She works for the townspeople. They voted her in with a landslide vote of over 3,000 votes. And that kind of does earmark that the townspeople are ready for some change or positive direction. Let's see here. Johanna's sole goal is to shed the light and truth on everything, so the townspeople will have a voice in what is going on. She's here to stay for her elected term, so I'd recommend that we all start working together instead of trying to tear her down weekly. Instead of wasting time and money and energy on fighting a political fight, I think that really needs to stop. The very first town council meeting that she came into, she was verbally abused and yelled at. And it's pretty much a shame that our council members would act in such a form or any adult in that matter, in a public matter. Of course, that meeting ended. We weren't able to proceed or do anything. She's going to stay here because the townspeople elected her, and her job is very simple. She's just going to state the truth. That's all she's here for. She has nothing to gain, you know. She's just here to do her job. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. I just would request or encourage you to come in your leadership role and get a hold of your council and keep them all above board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Grace Woodrum, and I live at 830 College Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. On behalf of my husband, who is unable to be here due to work, we just wanted to thank you, give a thank you to the Christiansburg Fire Department and all the first responders who came out to our house the night that our house flooded and our basement had collapsed. We just want to say thank you for your hard work and dedication, and thank you to his coworkers who also came out every day, every week, to help us get back into our homes so quickly. So we just wanted to say thank you, and we really appreciate the first responders of our town.
Got some handouts for you guys. You can just take one and pass it out, please.
So good evening, Town Council Mayor and the good citizens of Christiansburg. My name is Alicia Falk of Den Hill Road in Christiansburg. And I'm a concerned citizen who believes in a responsible, fair, and transparent government. I'm coming before you this evening to bring to light some recent activities or recent events that you may not be aware of. I've only known Johanna Hicks since October when I read a profile in the League of Women Voters catalog. And normally, I just chuck those things right in the trash, but something told me to hang on to it. And when I read her platform of bringing transparency to government, I reached out to her and volunteered for her campaign. We instantly connected, and the rest is history. I look at her like my sister, and my mom here can vouch for that. And I fully support what she stands for, which is "we, the people." In December, after watching the attack on our Second Amendment rights, I was concerned about government overreach and infringement on our rights, so I created the Second Monday Constitution Group with the help of my friend Marie here. We meet once a month at her restaurant, and we have different guest speakers to inform, educate, and bring awareness to our constitutional rights and freedoms. So far, the venture has been a huge success, and we're very proud to be hosting next month Senator and gubernatorial candidate Amanda Chase, as well as Daniel Gay, on July 31st at the Patback Soul Shack. So we would like all of you guys to come out. You're all welcome and invited. It was during this time that I had my very first interaction with a lady named Jennifer Martin. She came into this group and started her asking other members, causing drama and trouble. So I investigated her account and realized it was a recently-created fake book profile with no picture. I messaged her and asked her what her real name was, and she said Jennifer Martin. And I asked her to verify that she was, in fact, who she said she was. She refused, so I kicked her out and blocked her, and she was furious. And she messaged me demanding to be let back into the group, and then she threatened me that if I didn't let her back in, that she would go and trash me online and defame me, and she did. And all of this is evidenced in those packets that I gave you. I then started investigating who Jennifer Martin really was, and all roads started to lead to the town council and one Marissa Sacks. Shortly after this, Jennifer Martin started requesting FOIA information to do with me, my Second Monday Constitution Group, Johanna Hicks, Marie March, Chris Walts, and several other friends. She was convinced that Johanna was the mastermind of the group because she was an admin, but Johanna had nothing to do with removing her or anyone else. So far, this Jennifer Martin has targeted me and my friends. She's harassed, bullied, and defamed me online. She's threatened me in my group. And she also shares the same group of friends with Marissa Sacks, Dan Irwin, Becky Linkus, and Sheila Basham. Now, those friends have continually harassed and bullied us as well. I've been in communication with Marissa via Facebook Messenger, and you'll find those communications there, since December. So I asked her directly if she was Jennifer Martin. She initially denied it, but when I pressed her with questions of how does this person sound exactly like you? How does Jennifer Martin use the exact same word choices? Such same verbiage, syntax, language style, et cetera? Then Marissa admitted that she was hacked. So to be clear, and her admission is on page 10 of the Marissa packet. So to be clear, Marissa's position, as evidenced by her own words, is that while it was her account that created the Jennifer Martin fake account, it wasn't her that did it. It was a hacker. But if she was hacked, I just have some questions. How did the hacker?
You have 30 seconds.
How did the, I'm almost done. How did the hacker imitate Marissa so well? How did the hacker also hack into her next-door neighbor's email with one of the FOIA requests came from the email from Mom Costigan? How does this hacker live only one street over from Marissa? And also, did you report the hack to the police? Because being a vice mayor, I would think that you'd be privy to important documents, so hopefully you would have reported that. But if you weren't hacked and you were Jennifer Martin, look at all the time, resources, and taxpayer money that's been wasted.
I would do. Thumbs up.
Okay, so at the very least, I deserve an explanation for this. Thank you. And all this information and evidence is in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, for the comment section?
Yeah, I'm here.
He was in the hallway.
I was in the hallway.
I asked for you to come. I will allow you to speak, Chris. You were here, and you're a long-time contributor.
Chris Walts, 1370 Regis Street. I see that you have the, your wonderful Town Council Code of Ethics on the agenda tonight. Maybe there's some other things you may want to discuss. Like Councilman Stipes taking part in closed meetings to discuss giving his wife, the clerk of the council, a raise. It's a violation of the Conflict of Interest Act, Mr. Stipes.
It's never happened.
It's right here in the minutes.
I abstain from any discussion.
You abstain from the votes, but you are not allowed to take part in any part of a closed meeting where you have a personal interest involved, which your wife's paycheck is a personal benefit to you. I said, I mean, you know, and also, maybe you'd like to explain during your thing about easy fix, block email address, spam. So you want to send citizens emails to spam? What is that? Is that your pedigree filter, Mr. Stipes? Why are you at it? How about Councilwoman Sacks asking for money from businesses for that nice, which was a beautiful banner, to get free advertising on town property, which I believe your business was also one of those that got free advertisements on town property? Or which account was it was that you had hacked there, Marissa? Was it Jennifer Martin? Was it Mom Costigan? Which one? Yeah, that's all I have. You know, y'all really wouldn't know much about ethics if it jumped up and slapped you in the face.
I'd like to make a comment on that, Mayor.
Certainly.
If I'm not mistaken, the meeting where we discussed Ms. Stipes, did not Mr. Stipes, he left the room while we were discussing anything related to this?
I, to my knowledge, I've never been in the room when my councilman wife has been discussed for 14 years. She's been on council longer than I have been. To my knowledge, whoever being paid, to my knowledge, I've never been part of any discussion that she's been discussed.
No, I would agree with that. That's for the record. My turn on council. Mr. Stipes always leaves when we discuss Michelle's annual salary or any type of bump or review.
The whole time that I've been on council, oh, Mr. Stipes has gone out of his way to make sure that he is not involved with anything concerning his wife. And I think that's dreadful that's coming up because he, he works at it. He constantly works at it. In fact, I don't think they, they don't even come to a council in the same car. They just try to stay away from each other and just to keep, keep things above board. And Brad, I support you the whole way.
Close the citizens' comments section. We will go on to some committee reports. I believe we have a committee report from the street committee?
Yes, Mayor. It'll be brief. It's a lot vacation, a fortunate lot vacation request along North Franklin Street at the corner of Acres. What is it? There's a sketch right there. It's at Acres Farm Road, which is directly across from Horn Funeral Home along North Franklin Street. There's been a request by the property owner for the town to vacate that kite-shaped, I don't know if you can mouse it, Andrew, but there's a kite-shaped piece of right-of-way, which basically is property the town owns that we're not using, that they would like us to vacate. The town staff has reviewed this. The town, if council grants the request based on this, the town still will retain any type of utility that we need for drainage or utilities or any type of easements. And the staff has recommended that we consider vacating that as we do around town for various requests. And Mr. Bishop, have I left out anything? So the request is to vacate that kite-shaped piece of property, and the town will retain easement interest for anything that we need, drainage, utilities, et cetera. So we'll see, it still could be used if we need it. But they couldn't build, there's nothing that could be built on it. But Mr. Bishop and I reviewed that, and we see a benefit to the town as putting it on the tax rolls since it's being requested. And the town will have full utility of the property. If for some unforeseen reason in the future that we need it, we'll still be able to use it. So the street committee recommends, actually, that would be an action item. Can we take action on that now, Mayor? Or is that on the agenda for later?
I don't think it's on.
Can I?
Do we? Yeah.
Who wants the copy of that?
I, it's, Andrew, what's the, it's Summit Bank.
Summit Bank. Summit Bank owns the lot. The right-of-way is town right-of-way.
Yeah, we own the, we own the kite-shaped piece of property, which is just road right-of-way. And so the property owner has requested that we vacate that to make the lot more developable in the future. And, but the town can still use that. What it would, their benefit to them is safe, as I understand it, is that in the future, if there is something built on that, which I don't think there's any plans for that right now, but it does help them with building setbacks. There's a 30-foot setback line. But the town can still, if council grants this, we can still use that property however we see fit. So if we need to put a drainage structure in there or if we wanted to put anything, a bus stop, anything at all we want to put in there, we could put it in there. So it's an interesting request, but not unusual. We have them from time to time where we're not using property, and that's a potential benefit to the.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay. So that's it, and.
It's a form of motion.
I'll make, yeah, with that, the street committee recommends approval of the request as presented, and that recommendation is made in the form of a motion.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, and appropriate discussion. And if it is not under discussion, that may be considered as a review.
You can vote now, if you'd like.
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
6:00. Thank you.
I'm going to make a comment about, I'm really grateful that that bank came over to Christiansburg and bailed that facility there.
Under discussion, Mayor and council, we have the monthly bill list. And I believe Randy, you took it out of consent agenda?
That's because we have a bill from Logo House in the bill list for $101.96. And that is the first bill that we have for Mrs. Sacks' business since she's been on council. It's under the $500 threshold for competitive sealed bids that's required by Code of Virginia. So it is allowed under, under that, basically, provision of purchases of less than $500. The only thing you kind of need to watch out for using that provision is contract stacking. is contract stacking. And just to give you an example, this is for purchase of four shirts. If you had, say, five of these in a six-month period, I would consider that contract stacking. You know, one less than $500 in a six-month period, I don't think it's, you know, it's certainly legal. It's when you get into repetitive purchases of the same nature that you run into the potential for contract stacking, which is considered illegal. But like I say, some probably one purchase, it really can't be considered contract stacking.
So this is the same name as Logo House is marketed in Main Street LLC? Is that correct?
Yes, it's doing business as.
Can you please tell me if that's legal under FOIA?
To, I don't think she can vote on.
Purchase things from a town council?
I don't see a problem with that. Only she didn't select them.
Randy, so my understanding is that we're going to make two votes tonight. I'm going to take a motion. We're going to, I will accept a motion to approve the $101.96. To pay the bill for Logo House. Do I have a motion?
What are the T-shirts for?
Seconds.
Police Department.
Have a motion and a second, and a discussion? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, can I get the second on the?
Here.
Please, the motion. I'm sorry. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Those are four, two extensions that pass, thank you. Now, do I have a motion to accept the monthly bills?
So move.
Second. Motion and various seconds.
I've just got a quick question on the last, is Val in here? Or Randy might be able to answer this. On that, on the last page, there's a $200 travel expense for Public Works and I believe the police. Is, could you just, just give me a quick detail on that?
Last page. Public Safety Group?
Yeah, Public Safety Group.
That is, let's see, it looks like Car Department Protective Gear. And the, see, the last item, the regular hold on company corporations for recycling cost.
Okay, this, this.
There's a description.
Way of travel.
Under travel.
If you don't have it right now, Randy, you can.
That's Val forgot to put in her template. It was $200 for PD, is all.
For?
$200 for travel for the police department, and that was it.
Travel?
Yes.
Sir, I mean, I'm just curious to detail, was that for a vehicle rental or?
For the travel? No, I think that's for DM when they go to the schools.
Okay.
Daily premium.
Thank you.
Have motion and a second. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Town Christiansburg Community Block grant substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. We discussed this earlier.
Make a motion, we approve the budget modification for the CARES Act funding.
I second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Budget modification number 44 for CARES Act funding fiscal year 2019, 2020. I think that is to put it into the budget.
Correct.
As income.
Yes.
Do I have a?
I so moved to approve budget modification number four.
Now, motion and a second?
My second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
6:00, resolution to approve budget modification number four for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
6:00. Resolution to approve the funds and budget modification number four for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to appropriate the budget modification number four for 1920.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, and none, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very much. Discussion, Code of Ethics. I'll make an open statement that since 2007, we have had a code of ethics that has been adopted by council. It was reapproved this year, five to one. So it is a living, breathing document. And having this document, regardless of whether you approve it or disapprove it, you are responsible to the terms of the Code of Ethics.
Mr. Mayor, let me make a comment to start with. I think most of you people have, maybe I have a column, letters of the editor in the paper occasionally. In fact, there'll be one there on Sunday. And our attorney talked to me and said that I was infringing on ethics and that it is what I would put down there. I would put my name, and then I would put Christiansburg Town Council. And you will see, it's been changed because of their points. And I said, it's, I'm on Christiansburg Town Council. The opinions that I'm putting out are mine, and they do not represent the council. So if anybody on this council has, you know, had ethics problems, you know, I guess that's me, and I'm hoping that I corrected it.
I'm grateful for you making that comment because the reality is we do think they're indifferent in a lot of issues, including gun control and the gun issues. And so I thank you for making this statement.
Honor, around March 12, 2020, a complaint was received from a member of council regarding violations of our Code of Ethics against another member of the town council. And I'll say this, this is a discussion by mayor and council. There is no side discussion, there is no side comments. If you disregard this and disrupt this portion of the meeting, you will be removed. The complaint identified sections 2, 5, 8, and 9 of this adopted Code of Ethics. This matter was immediately filed due to our town attorney for review and response. In April, we received a letter of opinion from them, attorney-client, from them. This is attorney-client privilege and exempt from FOIA pursuit of the Virginia Code 2.2-3705.12. A brief conclusion from what this was written, what this was written is, most of what is written on social media, email, et cetera, is protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and upheld by the Supreme Court, that social media platforms used by elected officials are public forums and are therefore open for all citizens to express their opinions. Each council member has the right to freely express his or her views and opinions, particularly where there is no profanity or similar abusive language was used and no meeting was disrupted. And the duty of the council members is to ensure their views, express their views and opinions in order to achieve an open and robust dialogue concerning public business. Our attorney presented the following options for moving forward after this complaint was received. Could make a finding that the council member violated the Code of Ethics. The finding itself could serve as an admonition, admonition, or public language could be included to reflect an admonishment or public reprimand. Factors the town council to consider in deciding whether to make such a finding include, but are not limited to the statements included above. Read with attention. Make a finding that the council member had violated section 2.2 of the Town Charter and Virginia Code number 15.2-1400, section D, by engaging in disorderly conduct. Such a finding could serve as a final action or a fine to be imposed. Again, refer to conclusions in the rights listed above. If a fine is imposed, it would be difficult to collect. Make a finding that the council member has violated section 2.2 of the Town Charter by engaging in malfeasance or misfeasance. This finding is made, if this finding is made, the finding itself could serve as a final action, or the council members could expel from the council with occurrence of five remaining council members. Malfeasance and malfeasance and misfeasance is generally reserved for a narrow class of misconduct where specific official duties are concerned, which is wrongful, unlawful, intentional, dishonest, and determined in some tangible way. Our attorney feels that this would be difficult to find that current facts meet this standard. Make a finding that no violation has occurred, do nothing. There is no legal requirement that this town, county council, make a finding or take the action. It will be up to the members of this council to decide which, if any, they might choose to pursue. In review of the social media communications, email, and personal actions of a council member, I have concluded and agree that most of the written statements of various forms of media is protected under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. I believe that the First Amendment of the Constitution allows certain freedom of speech. I do not believe it protects a person from making false, misleading statements about individuals, both public and private citizens. I find that there are many innuendos that claim certain facts that are not true, and certainly may be taken in the vein of having, of harming the reputation of innocent individuals. One example would be an inference that an official from another jurisdiction left his job after money was missing from that town's budget, an area which this individual had no control or access to. I also find it disturbing, serious attacks on council members, town administration, and individuals simply because we, they, do not have the same opinions as this member of council. Virginia Tech Airport, DCI, great roads on Main and the farmer's market, to name a few. I have also determined this council member has violated the first line of our Code of Ethics, comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws, ordinances, and policies of the town government. This member had work done on property without a building permit, which was clearly required, and only obtained it after the fact. It has been stated by members of the public, this council member filed false, misleading FOIA statements on at least two occasions. When brought to this member's attention, he commented a separate sheet was given to the clerk of council, and she misplaced it. The FOIA form clearly states no attachments are allowed, and additional information can be listed on the final page of this document. In a meeting held between the council member, town manager, clerk of council, and this member, recanted her statement to say that she found it at home and destroyed it. I would be remiss if I did not say, this member, I would be remiss to say this member is a liar on the council in Code of Ethics. I have found isolated instances of violations by other members, but none as blatant as described above. I will now open up the council, five minutes. Mr. Stipes?
I don't have a statement prepared. But what I, what I do have a major concern about is what I, what seems to me to be an erosion of integrity and public trust of this, of this board of late. And that's, that's a primary observation of mine, and that, that erosion has affected our efficacy as a board. It's also spilled over to our staff and causing stress and anxiety. And that's my biggest concern, is to maintain the integrity of this board and the public trust and the ability to make decisions for, for our citizens. So that's, that's basically it. My concern is to restore the integrity and the public trust.
So my concern would be, I would come with a good brand in the integrity and public trust of the public of our board. And I would put out there that as a board, we are responsible, we are responsible for means in ourselves and our members, also our, our acquainted officials on any board. So we have to look at that. When we look at any board member, if they act in any certain way outside of our Code of Ethics, would we take the same action with them as well?
Mr. Hubbard?
You know, I've been on board now on the town council now for 11 years. And during that time, council has not always agreed on things, but they have been able to work it out together. Like Mr. Shawalter and I, we did not vote on the same thing, you know, for maybe 11 years. But we still work together. And I've noticed lately, in the last four or five months, that council is not working together, and we're not cooperating. Everybody's not cooperating. And I know to ensure if that has to do with ethics or not, but that's the attitude that we want to reapply to the council.
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, when I came on board, I came on board to serve the community of Christiansburg. I hold myself to a high standard of ethics. It's just based on my background. You know, I had to know right from wrong, whatever. To me, personally, there's some personnel conflict that going on that needs to be held or conducted outside of council meetings, or outside of council, whatever. I mean, I, you know, I'm not saying I'm blaming anyone on this board, but I do hold myself high, far as ethics wise. And I think we all need to do that. That's all I think.
Ms. Sachs?
I'm refraining from comment.
Ms. Six?
Well, since you guys all have made it this about me ever since the beginning, even before I got elected, that end of November, by the eighth, I was getting phone calls. By the end of the month in November, I was already getting questions about signing NDA forms. And I was, by the end of the year, I was being kicked out of rooms, meetings that you guys had because you were going into closed meetings. And at the same time, you were kicking out a veteran out of a room, and you told him he's down, he's down lying his hands. That's you, Mr. Hubbard.
Sorry, I don't remember that quite right.
Exactly. He's a veteran, and you told him that. He has lost the son and everything, and he's been in the war with his wife.
Thank you.
Not only that, I'm not finished.
You haven't gone through an half minute?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
I am tired of your talking. I'm tired of you guys coming after me with stupid excuses about things. You are blaming me for the things that you guys are doing to me. I feel discriminated, and that's exactly how I felt from the very beginning. Because you guys told me that you had to sign NDA forms. Where is your NDA form, Mr. Showalter and Mr. Stiles? Do you ever sign those forms?
If I was asked to sign it, I signed it. I don't leave a record.
You guys told me you had to sign it. Well, guess what, Randy, do you find those forms?
I did not, but they are both sitting council members.
Well, they told me at that meeting, enclosed meeting, where Marissa Sacks yelled at me for a while, and you guys allowed her to yell at me, argue with me, and then leave. Not only that, but I started getting a town council and everything. There is a lady by the name of Jennifer Martin, Marissa Sacks, who is Jennifer Martin.
I'm not answering your questions.
The accusations that you guys have done against me, my family, and business owners, and all their friends of mine, and by some of your friends, where they have told me online that they are gonna bury me, or they are gonna punch my friends in the face and next time they see them, or the fact that I have to go and volunteer at the Starline, and then they show up in there because they know I'm gonna be there with my daughter. I feel threatened. I feel scared. You guys don't even know from where I came from. You haven't even taken the time to know who I am. I came from a country where I had to see a lot of pain in my life. I've lost everything in my life many times over. I've come to the United States because I feel proud of this country. And I actually hurt because of everything that's happening to this country. I came over here to find freedom. I came over here to find a better future. And I came and I moved to a town as beautiful as Christiansburg, what I thought. This is the best town in the whole country. And yeah, I get treated like shit ever since I won in town council. You guys, you going meet her at her workplace. Showalter goes over there. I see you going over there and having talks with Mrs. Sacks all the time at her office.
Really?
Yes, sir.
How many times?
I have seen you more than once.
Well, certainly, after ten, two years, I would assume that.
Well, sir.
You have a minute left.
Well, sir, I feel attacked. Our businesses have been attacked, you going after our buildings. We bought a house on white pine, and no, we did not build that garage. That garage was there before. And all we needed was the two garage doors were broken, and I had commented this to you. And we replaced them with two windows and a door and everything else. My husband did the work. And then all decided we're getting complaints by Mrs. Sacks. And then, well, sure enough, my husband is as nice as you can ever meet somebody. Yes, he's gonna do whatever the hell you guys want to say him to do.
Thank you.
Ms. Hicks, the clarification? Please show me where I made that complaint.
Uh, can you? Randy, can you please tell me if it wasn't you, the one that told me the other day that it was her that made the complaint?
Which complaint?
About white pine.
About white pine?
Yes.
I'd have to check.
Can I call a defendant over here?
Thank you.
To testify?
You're good.
Ms. Hicks, it's clear that you are not comfortable here on council. And it's clear that this is causing a lot of problems within yourself and within your family. I don't mean to be rude or anything like that, but maybe you should think about resigning.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that is an uncouth comment. She's a publicly elected official. Stay on board, I'm sorry, Sam.
I'm gonna say one more thing, and you know, I know Ms. Hicks, I mean, I talked up to her and I helped. And when she says, "You guys..."
Yes, I do agree with you.
I have another thing too.
Yes, you are right.
Okay.
I am the person, the one that I stick out for, Mr. Bishop. He is, I am so proud of this man. Because while you guys are attacking me, all he has done is been kind and nice to me. Just like I expect every single one of you guys to treat me. I deserve to be treated with respect. When I come over here, I have taken a lot of sacrifices to be where I am today.
Okay.
I have worked my tail off to be here. And as you well know, a lot of people voted for me, and there was a reason for that. And I gotta thank God for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Stay on boards?
I'm sorry, Bishop didn't finish, I'm sorry.
Town managers report?
In regards to water shut-off, we sent out letters for water shut-off right after the last council meeting. In following us sending the water shut-off notices, the SEC came out with provisions that utility providers who are subject to SEC regulation cannot do water shut-off. We are not subject to SEC regulation, so we can proceed with water shut-off. Some localities are choosing not to do that, although again, we have discretion to continue with that. Just want to, I guess, confirm with council that we're gonna proceed with water shut-off this month.
Do you have any objections? Agreed upon date?
We did send the letters basically following the last council meeting, alerting people that if they weren't on a payment plan by shut-off date, we would shut them off.
Can we get a number of how many of those there will be?
It was approximately eight hundred, although I know Val says that several have been in this week basically in response to the letters that we sent. So that number's definitely come down.
I think that was past due water bills for the month of March. It was not all of our past due water bills, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I don't think that figure was quite that high. For some reason, I think they sent out a hundred and forty-six letters.
I do know, like I say, I do know several people had come in this past week to pay this. And yes, I think you're right, that they only sent them out for basically the March past due bills.
And people do have, there's a path to getting on a plan to catch up, right?
Correct.
So this would only affect people that have not paid and not made any arrangements?
You'd have to come in, see Val and Finance Department. She would basically set up a payment plan for you that basically both the town and the customer would agree to as reasonable. They'd have to sign a statement, and then we would not disconnect the water if that's the case.
And that's very discretionary on Val's part?
Yes, it is.
Based on the personals, the person's circumstance?
Past history, yes.
Very good.
At this point, we're only cutting off for non-payment of bills that we do on March first and before.
And you have some of those bills that are in excess of a thousand dollars, which meant they weren't paying before?
No.
Okay.
Yes, they were not paying before.
How many businesses have it lost, do you have any?
Very few, actually. I think when I looked at the larger list for May, it was maybe eight businesses on there at the most. And only one, I think, is a serious issue. The rest are, I don't know, we gave them time, so they're taking their time.
So we do have payment plans for them?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Is that a way, or how long can they understand that? Can you make it like, it does six months?
Depends on how much they owe. If it's unrealistic to expect that they can pay it in six months, I'll go out as far as eight, but that's really as far as they'll go. But for the most part, they're four to six months, so we're letting them take it out. And right now, we're asking them to come in, and when they're signing a payment plan, we're asking them, we're including the payment that is due July first to try and give them a chance to get all of those payments caught up. It's putting all of those bills on a payment plan, which should help reduce the number that would be subject to cutoff coming up. The big caveat is, is that they have to make the payments on the payment plan. If they don't make those payments, they're subject to disconnection. So we're just trying to work with everybody to give them a chance to get back on their feet, but we can't go without payment forever, so.
We did lengthen that from sixty to ninety days, correct?
Yes, yes.
Or we extended it another month, and I hope folks that are watching that may find themselves in that situation, that Ms. Tweedy and her staff are ready, willing, and able to work out a plan to catch up. And I think that's important, too.
I have a question about the KRSAP. I know they're gonna be giving this money to keep and all these different organizations. Is there anything that we can mention under, when we go to write these checks, to say, "Hey, would you guys please make it a priority for this money when it's given out to the citizens of Christiansburg, that some of this money can come back to pay for some of those whatever bills that are due?"
That's the idea behind it, and part of the idea of funding through those organizations is they are needs-based organizations.
Okay. So isn't it consensus of the council that we will go ahead and continue to cut off the schedule?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Randy?
Just point out that Chief Hanks is here for health task force update when you get to other staff.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
I don't have anything, Mr. W.
Very good. Your other staff? Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here again. Chief Sisson's not able to be with us tonight, so I'm drafted tonight, so. So far, the New River Health District, we had a hundred and seventy positive COVID cases.
And then?
Hundred and seventy total, that's in the whole New River Health District.
Hundred and seven?
Hundred and seventy, includes Floyd County, Giles County, Montgomery County, Pulaski County, and the city of Rappaher. We've had twenty-six positives in the last ten days. We've run six hundred and eighty-six tests through Frayland Lab in Maxburg, Virginia Tech, with only a three point one positive rate. The state average is six point four positive, so we're half, in Montgomery County, we're half of the state average, so that's a plus for us. We're not sure how many tests have been performed at Med Express or Velocity Care, because the only reports we get from them, or the Health Department gets from them, are what positives they have. They don't tell us the numbers that they have with negative cases, therefore, we don't know how many cases going through. Those two organizations are negative, we only know what positives show up. Today, we had a hundred and seventy-seven scheduled to test in Pulaski County. I think we actually tested about one sixty-eight, which we're only testing one day a week now, we're testing two days a week. Now, we're only testing one day a week, so the amount of people that we're testing will be a lot higher than it would be over a two-day period of time. Testing went well today, we're gonna test again next week. We're testing every Tuesday now. The numbers, to me and the rest of the group, we appear like the numbers are decreasing. We're still right at the three one positive rate, which is less than half the state average, which is, you know, a great sign for our area. So everybody in our area is doing the right thing. You know, they're staying out, and they're wearing a mask when they should, if they're out in public. They're doing what they should be doing, and we appreciate all the efforts by the local citizens to keep, continue to do. The governor's announced that Phase Three is supposed to kick in starting, I think, July one. Phase Three is gonna increase occupancies in our restaurants and rent facilities, OGMs, and stuff like that. So we'll be continuing to monitor those numbers and see if we have any increase in numbers. Still, you know, we've maintained three one for a long time, it's not really good. It's either three one or less on the positive rate. So I think the efforts of the Task Force Group and the Health Department have proven successful from Montgomery County. We'll continue to work hard to make sure that we pay attention, you know, to our hospitals, make sure our hospitals don't get overrun if we have another round of this stuff come through. COVID is here to stay, it's not going away. It's the new norm that we're gonna have to live with. We have to protect ourselves, we have to protect our people, and everybody just has to be aware of what they're doing now. COVID won't go away, you know, when they get a vaccine, it won't go away, it'll be here. I think, you know, a vaccine is probably still, you know, at the end of the year or mid-spring next year before a vaccine will come out. But I'd be welcome to answer any questions if anyone has any questions.
So that's the current thinking, that maybe by spring, there might be a vaccine for that?
That's what Dr. Fushi said, this was the other day, he's looking at it, late December, early spring for a vaccine. You know, most vaccine, I'm not a doctor, most vaccines take years to develop. I've been working around the clock to develop a vaccine for this, but, you know, most vaccines take a long time to develop. The vaccine, I think, the common, you know, vaccine for the common flu is not the sixty-five percent effective. So, you know, how effective will the first round of the COVID vaccines be? We don't know until we can get them, and we can get them out in the field to see what's going on. I'm not a doctor, doctors can talk to us maybe better, I don't know. But I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell, you know. We've got to protect ourselves, we gotta wash our hands, wear our masks when we need to. Bottom line is, you know, personally, we gotta get the economy rolling. We gotta get everybody back to work, we gotta get business up. And the Task Force is a good group, and we've worked hard. We're cutting back, we were meeting seven days a week, we went to five days a week, now we're three days a week, and we're only testing one day. So we're seeing that decline, so we're able to step back a little bit and get back to doing what we're normally doing. But we'll continue to be vigilant, monitor, monitor the area, monitor everything that's going on. And if we have an issue, you know, we'll take care of it. We've done really well, I'm proud to be part of the New River.
Is there any way to find out if there was or is a hotspot in the New River Valley?
We're not really showing hotspot in the New River Valley right now. Those, I think that's listed on the Department of Health's website now. But we're not really, we're not really showing a hotspot in the New River Valley. It's sort of sporadic all over, you know. In Montgomery County, you know, we've had a hundred and twelve cases, we have eleven people hospitalized. Unfortunately, we've had two fatalities from that. Floyd County's got fourteen cases, two hospitalized and one dead. Dallas County has seven cases, no one in the hospital, no deaths. Pulaski County, thirty-seven cases, six in the hospital, and one fatality from that. And then the city of Rappaher has ten cases with only one person hospitalized. Hospitalized, so, you know, we're not really seeing, seeing a major place sort of all over, so. Very good.
Thank you.
Report chief, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one quick question? What is the recovery number as far as the other people that have died and drowned and that are back?
I can't tell you that.
That's something they don't report.
Yeah, that's something that, you know, they're...
That's a positive news.
Sure, it absolutely is, and that's something that hasn't really been tracked, I don't believe, from day one, which, you know, it would be nice to have some good positive numbers out there, you know, how many people have recovered. Some states, some states are tracking that number, but I don't think that number's gonna be very accurate. Because if the person doesn't go back to get retested, then how do you know they recovered? Just, they're not symptomatic, so they're not showing symptoms of COVID or anything else. But if they don't go back and retest, then it's really hard to come up with that number, so. You know, we've been waiting for that number for a long time, we just haven't been able to.
Besides the COVID, I think, I think I was grateful to hear one of the members of our community to come over here and speak so well of you guys. Obviously, she herself, being a daughter of one of the former farming of the town, we were grateful that she came over and spoke, but I have seen you guys coming out, not just to her house, but many other houses, you know, in these plots that we had had in the town. So I wanted to thank you and thank your service members for bringing them. And I am very aware that you guys, my daughter, you guys, you know, it's like, correct me if I'm wrong, there's like fifty that are volunteer farming, correct?
We've got thirty-eight volunteer farming.
Eighty, ten, okay, so I'm grateful for that number. I mean, that's still an amazing number to have.
Absolutely, we're only too short right now, so, you know, our max right now is forty, you know, we don't even want to build this whole.
But that's, we are, we are very grateful to our services.
Thank you very much. It's really, it's really humbling, you know, when someone from the community comes before council and thanks our group for what they do. You know, we don't get a lot of that sometimes, and it's great to hear. We'll definitely pass it on to the man that's patient. We're very blessed in this town. This is my thirty-ninth year on the fire department here in town, this is my eleventh year as the fire chief. We are very blessed to have the volunteers that we have working in this town, not only the fire department, but the rescue squad also. It's a tax savings to the town. If we didn't have this resource, then, you know, it would cost us dearly in taxes to be able to provide a career resource here in town. Our guys do it selfishly, for free, and they deserve all the credit. I'm just the guy that steals the money, so we didn't do it without them.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I should.
Thank you. And if Joe had anything, then I don't know.
I was just here if you had questions, but no report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your circle.
Council reports, any committee report, any committees this week?
Yes, I had the first inaugural meeting with the Arts Board, and it was a fabulous meeting. Got to know all of the members, they have some fabulous ideas they've already brainstormed. And the basic that they're trying to get through right now is the foundation of exactly what is this group gonna look like, what is the focus, what's the priority of the plans? And they're... And they're all working on that actually now, before our next meeting. So they're pumped up, and it's going to be a really great year, I think.
Very good.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the Aquatic Center is open now, and it's open Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. You have to make a reservation to come, and you can stay there. You can just be a lane, a lap swimmer, and they have that down in the leisure pool or in the main competitive pool. And you need to make a reservation, and you can stay there for forty-five minutes, then you leave, and they clean up the area, and then let some other people in there. Very well organized, and if you haven't taken a shot at it, give them a call.
Mr. Stein?
Just a brief update. The Airport Authority has been very active. Took two days last week and did interviews. We're replacing Mr. St. Jean, and we don't have an announcement to make yet. We have another meeting on Monday. But I want to briefly mention Al Bowman, who was mentioned here. I've heard his name for years. I've sat on council for a number of years, and until I've served on this committee, I didn't ever know him really and work with him. He's an amazing man. He's eighty-eight years old. He's a Korean War veteran. He came to Virginia Tech and put himself through school and did very well. And actually, when the Airport Authority formed, they had to find one person, a large member, that all four jurisdictions had to approve. Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, Montgomery County, Christiansburg. And Al Bowman fit the bill, and he's just an amazing man, and I'm glad the mayor has put together this resolution and we get to honor him, but he's really a neat, a neat person. And then for council's action, I will be bringing a name to you. We are considering Mr. Bowman's replacement, and again, that replacement is someone that needs to be approved by all four jurisdictions, and I'm not ready to announce who that is just yet, but I, I think the council will, it'll be well received here in town. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Is the airport running?
The airport right now is closed to complete the construction, so we could compress the completion date with the contractor and get it opened, you know, before football season and so forth. But no, the airport for operations right now is closed. The, the open date, I think, is July eleventh. Even with all the rain, the contractors made very good progress, and, but to answer your question, today, no, you cannot land a plane there today, but by July eleventh, you should be able to.
Shaw?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bush, I don't have a time. Misses?
Um, the planning department met yesterday, and I got to mention something. We got a request from the, the school board trying to request to see if they will rezon, will rezon, they will allow them to rezon the property, they own seventeen acres downtown Christiansburg, for them to be able to have their mechanical shops and their maintenance shops and then a storage facility and then also buses. I tell you, there was a very big response from the public. They were on Zoom. They came in and spoke to the, to the department yesterday, and the people were not happy with the fact that this may take place in the middle of downtown. And even the school board mentioned something, said that they're open for any bids if anybody wants to make a bid as far as paying them for, for the piece of land. So they are taking anything that if anybody's interested in purchasing in there. So hopefully, they get really good money, so we don't have to...
Is that the entire piece of property, the whole complex?
Well, he said the...
Or is it just what they're trying?
Well, he says the price, the buildings are being used right now. But he said with the right amount of money, it was a price for almost eight million dollars. Just, I don't remember when he said that. It was recent. He said it was a high number, but still, you know, they would like to take bids if that was something that somebody was interested in doing. So I figure I'd rather just mention it to you guys and see if there is any, anything, because I know we, we talk about not having enough green space downtown. We talk about the, the rehabilitation of downtown Christiansburg. We have also talked and spent money in A R C things and programs and downtown Christiansburg Incorporated, and, and so I think that will go along with, if you were to want to have a farmer, a real farmer's market with parking spots and everything else. It's, it's in the middle of the street. So this one, it will give you a real facility if you wanted to do something in the town or a developer coming in and build shops downtown or restaurants and have walking spaces. I mean, so I was grateful for that. Also, I know we haven't taken action on this. So this is just on the works, and, and so I give your, I'll mention that to you guys. And I also encourage you to go and look at the old site, the one that they're currently using on Cambridge Street, because it does look like a disaster. And we had a person coming over here yesterday from the school board telling us they only get twenty-nine cents for a square foot to, to fix any and maintain some of those facilities, and that will be about the same budget we will get if the buses come downtown. So I will encourage the public to keep an eye for investors or somebody that wants to purchase that land, so hopefully, hopefully, you have to have an eye down.
Misses Sax has the floor. Thank you. Okay. I had some interruptions over here.
Oh, okay. So, so that was the, the comments, and like I said to you, we had a lot of people coming on and speaking about this against us allowing them to rezon this or for that.
I think the tax assessed value, that thing is six-point-one million dollars roughly with fair market tax assessed value.
I guess I have a question for that, because isn't that government agency? So they're, they actually don't have to pay real estate taxes, correct?
But for a sale of property, it would have to be...
And then we can get more real estate. We, we, we will definitely collect more fees, and it will be definitely a better-looking facility if it was something else downtown, just like Blacksburg is doing a great job selling, is doing an amazing job, even little towns like Lloyd. So I encourage people to take action on that and come out and speak if that's something that concerns you, because this is your town, and this is the future of our town.
Thank you.
I've, I've got a comment on that. Would invite all council members that was streamed last night. There was a brief interruption, I believe, but then they carried on. Randy, when is this coming before us as a public area?
Next, next council meeting.
Next council member. And Joanna, when will the Planning Commission vote on this?
We are still trying to decide, because we're supposed to go to the old site, which I took pictures, and I can tell you, it looks horrific. There is, the metal fence is falling apart, the grass is tall, there is weeds growing everywhere, and if that's the way that I'm going to take care of our downtown, I would be very disappointed and very angry, because, I mean, this is where my kids are growing up. This is where your kids and your, you know, the next generations are be growing up, and, and I do feel like our downtown needs help.
I do want to ask Joanna one question. Are you making a, I've heard you talk of a private entity, and I think it's Mr. Krantz or Dr. Krantz is one who, I think that's his name, Representative Public...
Tommy Krantz.
Tommy Krantz. They haven't put an RFP out, RFP for anybody to purchase, or a bid out for official bid that somebody can purchase the property. I believe there, from what I saw on the Planning Commission, they're proceeding forward with their initial CUP is to, to rezon it so they can put a facility, a training facility for hospital students there. But I guess I want to, I want to make sure, because some of the things I, I sort of heard last night was, you encourage a, a private entity to purchase the property and redevelop, or do you want the town of Christiansburg to buy the property?
I encourage anybody to, to, to come up with great ideas.
So are you, are you saying...
I would love for you guys to come up with ideas. I think it's in the best interest of our town to invest in something downtown for the long term.
Well, you are a council member. Are you proposing that we look into purchasing the property?
I don't think that we need all the property, because we already got too many government agencies downtown, but if that's something, I will encourage buying a piece of it and hopefully another investor purchase the rest. I mean, we can buy, we can go in with older investors. You guys know a lot of investors, probably, that knows more investors than I do. But I mean, encourage investors to come and say, hey, give the offers to the county so they have enough money to be able to provide the, you know, another side for those buses, because the reality is, we're not going to be dealing just, you watched the video you said, we are going to be dealing with probably stormwater runoffs. They're going to be washing and maintaining the buses. We have done a really good job with those creeks down there, and the maintenance and the environment that's going to be messed up with doing something else. Not only that, but if we can keep the building in there, that would be awesome, too, and just build something beautiful over there. I think I encourage our town council members to come up with ideas to help, to help this. I mean, we need to come up with ideas on maybe, can we get with somebody else, another investor, and purchase a part of that land?
I, I'll say something brief to that. I think it's a great, I, I would love to see that property converted to the private sector, as was done in Blacksburg with Old Bia Blacker Middle School. No, I like the idea. In fact, I think it would be fantastic. In order for that to happen, the school board has to declare that as a surplus property before we could even have any serious discussion or, or planning on that. But I do like the idea. In fact, I would like nothing better than to see that converted to the tax rolls and developed. But in order for that to happen, maybe if you want to bring that up with the school board, that's where it starts. So as Mr. Shawalter said, your own council is this way we are. If you want to speak to the school board, that's what has to happen first, is that has to be declared surplus. And then the, of course, you know, like they did with Blacksburg. I'm sure there's a process, but basically, that's the first step. Is that right, Randy?
Who do I give the guidance? Because I would like to have guidance maybe from you or somebody that knows, from our town council members, that knows what the process of this will be to get there. I know the real estate side of things, I'm obviously not, this is not something I'm going to purchase, not something that I can have, you know, but, I mean, I wish I had millions of dollars. I will buy it and do something beautiful with our town. I will make that to be restaurants and all kinds of stuff. I don't have the, you know, I, I'm not an investor for that kind of thing, but I encourage, you guys know very rich people as well, so let's go out there and help the school system to come up with the great ideas.
I think it's a great idea, and if you could get the school board interested in declaring that property a surplus, then, then those conversations could begin. Because that's really, until, until that happens, you're talking about, it's like us planning what's going to build, what we like to build on the Virginia Tech drill field. We don't have any authority to do that.
Well, but Blacksburg has the authority to not allow them to do anything else with that land. They were not allowed to get a zoning, they were not, I mean, Blacksburg is not ending up with this school buses. Why is it that we end up with everything that's not so nice for Christiansburg? We want nice things. I want a nice downtown. I think everyone in Christiansburg deserves a nice downtown.
And that's what the school board, that conversation goes back to the same point, and I'll conclude with that. I think it's a great idea, and I would like nothing better, actually, than to see that converted into something that would, you know, benefit the downtown and be put on the tax rolls. But that, the, the conversation has to start with the school board, because we're talking about planning something, it'd be like us planning what we want to build on the school property. But anyway, that's it.
Will you be willing to help me and, and work together? I mean, this is when I'm talking about working together with town council members. Can you guys help me get to that point where can we talk to the, to the school board? And I don't have a lot of voice, but when you unite a group of one or more, we have a voice.
Well, we can, we can bring that up as a council.
Craig Meadows and I have talked about getting the Board of Supervisors and Town Council together for our retreat, and would you also like the school board?
Well, unfortunately for this subject, you wouldn't, because they have to work together and also make a decision. But Joanna, I, you know, I know you're not working alone. I know you have your network of people out there. So I would encourage, you know, the school board are elected officials. You're one of the supervisors are elected officials, just like the people who showed up yesterday, who spoke in, in non-favor of rezoning. And I think we all agree, I don't want to speak to council, it would be nice for a private entity to buy that, but back on the tax rolls, as Mr. Stein states, and then do something nice with that property. I, I want that to happen. I just got a feeling last night from the comments that there was some sort of direction of the town of Christiansburg purchasing that property. And I just don't think we're in the proper position to do that or to create something where as a private entity would do a much better job.
Oh, yeah. And like I said to you, my, my goal is not for us to have more government offices. I mean, that's the least thing that we need. We need taxpayers to pay all these employees' bills and all our employees' paychecks. I mean, that's what makes a community great.
You know, I know the superintendent is part of the school board, but it might be good to start with him, and maybe we could even invite him to a council meeting to initiate what, what his plans are for that area.
Well, they, they, they have plans for it. That's what's coming to us here in a couple of weeks. And there's, and they have valid reasons for it. They do. I mean, what they said. But, you know, I don't think it's necessarily our job is to bend their arm and push them to the ground and say, this is what you want. Okay? They do own that property, just like if, like Joanna, you're going, it wouldn't be proper for us to say, what you can, can and can't do down there, right?
Well, I've been told that.
Wow.
Anything else? Any other business coming for council?
I do. I have one question. I'd like to circle back around to F. You know, Mrs. Hicks, you made a comment to Mr. Barber about him being at my office twice. Can you elaborate? Because I really don't understand what that has to do with council, our relationships here.
Was that town council conversations you were having? Are we bringing the code of ethics back again? Because I have followed...
Wait, stop it. Let me explain something to you. Ms. Hicks, Ms. Sax has done T-shirts and sweatshirts for me personally the last two or three years, most likely what I was there was ordering T-shirts and sweatshirts. I'm not there late at night.
Was, was she there for?
Mrs. Hicks, I got to stop you right there. These, no, these insinuations of what you're saying between our mayor and myself? He stopped by my office, and he has ordered twice recently a gift for his wife and stuff for himself. He is absolutely allowed to do that. Are you stalking either one of us to see if he comes to my office?
No, it just happens to be that I'm driving by on Roanoke Street, but I am not doing the stalking.
And this is an issue? I, I, I really take high offense to you even bringing this up.
I'm bringing this out because there is obviously a lot of stuff that is happening behind all these conversations and lawyers' conversations and things about attacking me and my business and my business partner or, or friends or other businesses that I don't even have a clue about. I mean, there were complaints about other businesses in town, and all of a sudden, you know, like, that information is not shared, but all of a sudden, my information is, all you guys know, I, not you that I know, but like, all you guys have that information. Like, you guys were attacking me. You're checking like on my name, like, what, who the hell do you think again? I'm Johanna Hicks. But there were questions about Royal Brunt, like, that's not who you are, or this, or that, or, or checking on our places, or checking on our friends' places, just because they're business owners. I, we feel harassed. I feel harassed. This between you and I attacks has to stop, completely stop.
It is a two-way fence, a two-way street.
Exactly.
With that, there were a journey.
I don't think we got our answer of what the accusation was.